It's got nine hundred, uh, fourteen.
I don't have any.
Fourteen, yes.
He needs some.
He says he's too much. I decided to cut my hair up back then. That was very impressive.
The hat. I tried, that's why I'm fixing it. Oh, I didn't fix it either, I just got it wet. He said, okay, it's gonna be good enough.
I'm having a very keen, have fun. So are you.
Screwed.
I will, thank you ladies.
Of course, the downside is I don't have any markups on mine, but.
Markup there. You didn't bet.
I got. Okay, first up. We've got a, I'm gonna call this, this is a public hearing at eight fifteen, we actually start the council meeting at eight thirty. This is a, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order, this is on the Mount Airy budget and tax rate. If anybody wants to say anything to the council at this point about the proposed budget or about the town tax rate, come on up to the podium. If you want to talk to us about something else that's coming up during the meeting, you can save that for them, this is a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. We're required to have these public hearings by law. All right. Well, I don't see anybody coming up here to talk to us on this subject, so then you wanted to make one statement about it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, just so the people in the viewing audience and the reading audience know that by state law, we are required to run an ad in the local paper, in that ad, again, we had to use state language that could not be altered, that says we actually increased taxes. In fact, the town of Mount Airy did not vote to increase any taxes, we kept the tax rate the same. What happened as a result of your tax rate, which happens to be the lowest in Carroll County, and the lowest in the state for similar municipalities, is that we kept it the same and your assessments went up, which netted a small increase to town of Mount Airy, and therefore triggered that statement that said there was a tax increase. There was not a tax increase, in fact, last year when your, when your assessments fell, you actually paid less taxes, so just as a point of clarification, nobody raised taxes, it's just a function of the assessments.
Actually, the other, the oddity is that the state rule makes an assumption that we have raised everybody, that your assessments went up, and actually in Mount Airy, because we're the only town that has this, your assessments are frozen at the nineteen ninety-nine value. So in fact, if you've owned your house all that time, your assessments haven't even gone up, so.
So, so you're talking about home state tax credit?
Correct.
Those that fall underneath home state tax credit, which is a vast majority, saw no increase at all. It's, it's the people that purchased our homes newer would see.
Correct.
As a result of increased assessments.
That whole state is based on the assumption that you're.
That's true. That's a good point.
It's based on the assumption that you're raising everything everywhere.
Good, good clarification.
Not seeing anybody coming up to the podium for the tax rate and budget. I will close this public hearing on that, and we will start the council meeting in ten minutes at eight thirty. Tom's here. Okay, I'm going to call this May fifth meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council to order. First, we are going to start with the pledge, and we have some Boy Scouts here who are gonna lead us in it, gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, for those of you who haven't realized, we're getting started a little late tonight. That's because today's an election day in town, and some of us have been at the polls, some you can see been at the polls a long time because they're quite red. Some of us are eating our dinner on our way here, coming back from the polls. So, that's what's been going on here in Mount Airy today, I think our first thing up is the mayor, somebody who's spent the day at the polls, and you can see he has a little bit of sun. Mr. Mayor, you have a plaque to present.
I do, and if I could ask Councilmember David Blaze to please join me at the podium. What a lot of people don't realize, to serve the town, they see us at these meetings, these monthly meetings, and that's really not all there is to this job. In addition to these monthly meetings, some of our council members serve one, two, or maybe three other meetings a month, and as a regular form of routine. In addition to that, they field phone calls, emails, and they get stopped while they're at the grocery store. And it's certainly something we all sign up for, but it's no less, it does take from your day-to-day life, it takes from your family. So we really honor and appreciate the service that every one of our council members give to the town. And tonight, we're here to honor David Blaze, who just gave four years of his life to the town. And, as is our custom, we have a beautiful plaque here, and it says, "To David M. Blaze, Town Council Member from 2010 to 2014, in recognition of your dedicated, diligent, and unselfish service as a Mount Airy Town Council Member, we present this to you." David, thank you for your service.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right, thanks, thanks, thanks David, thank you. Okay, we've got council meeting minutes to approve. First off, we've got the April seventh council meeting minutes, and then we've got the March twenty-fourth council meeting minutes, which were the closed meetings.
Peter, I'll make the motion.
All right, Bob's moving, we accept them?
Yeah.
I'll second. Any discussion? We're doing both of them?
Both of them, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I had to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, we've got one question. Next up, police report, I think we have Trooper Fike here.
Good evening, I'm Trooper Fike, with the Maryland State Police, currently side to Westminster Barrack, and your resident trooper program. I've met a lot of you over the time, and myself and Bonneville are still your resident troopers. You also have Trooper Smith, who I'm sure you guys have seen in the RG ninety. And you're also gonna have two new faces that you probably see, Trooper Snedeker and Trooper Thompson. So, if you see unfamiliar faces, it's still the same cars, and they're now your, your new resident troopers, so I'm sure you'll get to know them. Simple things, few things, total calls for April, one hundred and eighty-six, seventeen outside of town, sixty-two school checks, one hundred and five business checks, as you can see, we've really been increasing our presence in schools. We've taken over the DARE program. We're really trying to make our presence there, just because of how things are, the trend nowadays for, for school violence and things, which want to be as preventive as possible. Total of forty-five traffic citations were issued, one hundred and thirty-two warnings, forty-five safety equipment repair orders, one DUI, there were four collisions investigated, and two of which were charged, we had eleven code A nine accidents, which means no, nobody was injured, it was minor property damage. One CDS arrest, one, three non-CDS arrests, and twelve community policing activities. After that, as you can see on the council, our, our format is a little bit differently, but still itemizes by report type. The, there are reports that were handled between pages two and three, you have a legend also, if you don't know what our little abbreviations like MPOP are. That'll help if you guys are just safer.
Yeah, I appreciate the legend, because I'm always looking at these codes like, what's an MDOT? I don't know, malicious destruction of property, okay, that's, it's obviously.
If you hear CDS, that's basically drugs, but it's controlled dangerous substances.
And Trooper Fike, if I could, I'm gonna let the council know that Sergeant David Keller, who served us very well, he's great to work with, he's since been transferred. We'll be meeting with the new sergeant, and we're setting up a meeting right now with the lieutenant.
Okay, I know he'd been transferred.
He just got transferred, he did a great job, but from what I understand, the gentleman that's gonna be replacing him's background is in community policing, and that's, and that's exactly what we're looking for here in Mount Airy, so we look to continue our.
He's got a lot of time on him, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, Trooper Fike, I just want to mention that from the perspective of the DARE program, my daughter is a fifth grader at one of our elementary schools, and came home and remarked to me how good the presentation was. So, the message you're getting through to the kids is very well presented and very well received, so thank you.
Hopefully, we can keep it that way.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody here from the fire company, am I missing anybody? Bruce Walls, who usually gives us the fire company report, is also our chairman of the election commission, so he is, I know he's up at the, at the.
Maybe we can retract, we can go back when he comes in.
I guess we could, if, but I think he's probably been too busy to be working on his fire company report today. He's up at the, he's up at the fire hall counting the votes, so we'll skip that one. All right, now, right now, we have a little bit of time we set aside for community concerns, citizen comments. If anybody has anything they want to bring to the council, I think Barbara Biller is here, she's a candidate in Carroll County, she want to talk to us for a moment? Welcome.
Thank you very much, and it's great to be here. I am Barbara Biller, and I am running Republican candidate for Commissioner in District Four. And I've been making some regular trips down to Mount Airy to observe your Economic Development Commission meetings, your planning and zoning meetings, and some of your town council meetings, and even stopped in on a Saturday morning a couple of months ago. A lot of very good things are going on in Mount Airy, and so it's an honor to come down here and observe, see how things are going. Part of my platform is really to build a bridge between Mount Airy and Carroll County. Was just at a forum the other night for human services programs, and the county did a study, and there was an obvious missing zip code of two-one-seven-seven-one. So, that was a little bit surprising to me, maybe it shouldn't be, and maybe it's not to you, but I really feel like that the county commissioner position needs to be more visible here, more collaborative, you know, meeting with you and seeing what are the concerns and what are the issues that the citizens are having, and seeing what services there, or what is available at the county, just so we have a better relationship. You did an excellent job on the planning and zoning side, you know, the county right now does not have an approved master plan, and they are missing that, and have missed that for several years. So that needs to be brought to the county approval level, so it was very nice to come down here and see how it was handled with having the citizens come in and voice their opinions about different properties that were going through a change in zoning, or maybe some regulation changes. So, just thank you very much for being here, and I hope the, the folks that were up for an election, you had a great turnout, because really, I think all of the elections, you really just want people to be involved and, and turn out, so good luck to y'all.
Good luck to you as well.
Is there anyone else? All right, not seeing a charge to the podium, which sometimes there is. We will move on, ordinance is resolution, first up, we have ordinance two thousand fourteen dash nine, that is to adopt the two thousand fourteen fifteen town budget and set the tax rate, now that is here for adoption. I will move that we approve two thousand fourteen dash nine. I have a second from Scott. Any, any discussion on this?
No, just to. This is, this is the budget, right? So there's only one thing that I wanted to.
Think you want to change one thing?
Make a change for the budget, on page five. Can I get to it? Page five of the operating budget?
Spreadsheet or?
Spreadsheet, the huge one.
worksheet.
The worksheet, the one that's in your hand, Chris, right there. Yep, page five, it's line item one dash five-one-six dash five-eight-oh-six, I'm sorry, five-eight-oh-seven. Recreation and culture. Yeah, right now, it's four thousand, I'd like to recommend bumping that up to seven thousand. And this is to offset adding cultural elements to the town, specifically putting funding that I feel is necessary towards the Art Council to help them get going for things that they're doing.
All right, any discussion on that? I know what Bob's gonna say, Bob, you know. So, Bob, if Bob speaks out against this, he's not gonna eat the next few days, because his wife runs the Art Council.
Speak freely.
I think what the thought process is, is that the Arts Council's been doing a lot, they're, they're a proven entity now, they've been around for a year. They bring people into this downtown, they're looking for a home of their own right now, and they may need a little bit of help once they find someplace. So the, the thought was, it's, this just gives them money to possibly use to help, help get more established.
Chris?
So, don't take this as a sign that I don't support the Arts Council, but it's a council, how do we transfer funds to a council versus?
Well, it's an alliance.
Alliance.
They are, they are the Arts Alliance now.
They changed their name.
But it's not officially sponsored by the town, correct?
Well, we transfer funds to MAMSA.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we do, I mean, so it is done fairly regularly.
As your CFL, I can make sure it gets there.
Okay, are we worried about accountability?
The mayor's watch is going off, hold on.
Are we worried about any accountability or how the funds are spent? Do we know how the, how we have accountability?
By putting them with this line item, they will actually be under control of Parks and Recs Department, and they will have to, they will have to come to Parks and Recs to get money.
And town will have to disperse, too.
Right, right, and the town will have to disperse.
This isn't just a blank checking account.
Okay.
Any other?
Yeah, any concerns about offsetting that with revenue?
I think we ran the numbers through Charlene, right?
Well.
Charlene, pull the mic, Charlene, just pull the mic down, thank you.
To, to add it in, you've got some choices, you can cut something else, or you can increase the draw from reserves to balance the capital side. Because what this will do is it'll increase the general fund expenses, which will make the transfer of the capital less, which will require three thousand dollars more to be taken from reserves to balance that budget.
Potentially taken from reserves, we normally don't, but.
Yeah, we only take it out if we have to, and we haven't had to in about two and a half quarters years.
Right.
Okay.
We, we do, just so everybody know, we budget money every year, at the end of a budget cycle, there's always some money at the end which we say, well, this is money we'll take from reserves. Because the town of Mount Airy is, has always been very frugal, so we have, you know, other towns look at the amount of money we have in reserves, and they're just, you know, shocked, but we've got cash sitting there. And so when we run to the edge of budget cycle, we're, we're a little off, we'll just be, okay, well, we'll put that in to come from reserves. And in quite a few years, we, we've never actually even taken that money from the reserves at the end of the year, because we ultimately don't end up, because our staff is very frugal, they end up not spending all the money we have, or that we have budgeted for things, because we tend to be conservative. So that's why we're just sitting here talking about, oh, well, we'll take from reserves, well, in the scheme of things, that three thousand dollars coming from reserves is probably not actually money we're ever gonna take from reserves. Scott?
I didn't say anything.
I thought you wanted to add something. Any other comments? All right, I will then, I guess amend my motion that we accept this with that three thousand dollar increase in that line item to seven thousand dollars, I assume you're seconding that, Scott?
Second.
Any, just make sure we got the other discussion before we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm abstaining.
What abstention? All right. We have your budget. Next up. Two thousand fourteen dash ten, this is the FEMA participation, which is here for adoption, this actually came up last time, and we could not pass it as an emergency ordinance, because we only had three people at the table. And we just couldn't, we couldn't, couldn't do it therefore, so we just rolled it over to tonight. This is basically just routine housekeeping, really, just type ordinance. I introduced it last time? So I, since I introduced it last time, I will move that we accept it this time, Bob?
And I'll second.
I'll second, so any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Two thousand eleven, budget amendment to purchase camera and equipment for the downtown center, Bob, that one's yours.
Yes, we have been investigating.
This is the trash.
This is, this is the downtown trash and recycling center. And we're actually proposing a budget amendment for three thousand dollars this year to, if we, if we pass it at the June meeting, we can, we can purchase the equipment.
This is here for introduction tonight, then?
Yes, this is just here for introduction.
Okay, so you're introducing.
I'm introducing.
I will second, so it's on the budget for next, it's on the calendar next month.
Thank you very much.
This is to buy the cameras, we do have a real problem, I've gone over there and seen it, people just throwing trash over the fence, and just a mess.
And yeah, and it gets left open pretty regularly, and we want it, we, we've tried very hard to, you know, approach this with, with talking to people. We want to get it on film, and then maybe we'll have a little more.
And then you'd have to buy it for July.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any unfinished business? All right, on the new business, Chris, you're on here for strategic plan update, and I saw that running on the computer over there, so.
Yes.
I assume it's a PowerPoint.
It's a PowerPoint, death by PowerPoint.
You want to have things darkened?
No, maybe just a little.
Maybe these outer lights? Dr. O'Brien got them, well. That's okay, we never know which lights work with this, the switches are completely.
It's arbitrary.
Well, they're, I think they're three ways, so they change.
That, the award, that's coming up, new business.
Coming up.
New business.
That's not on the copy I was handing. Thank you. That's okay, that's okay, that's okay, that was not on my copy.
This was just amended.
Okay, we will get to that, well, Chris, do you want to do yours or do this, this other last budget amendment one, real quick?
Let's, all right.
We got a quick budget amendment, ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twelve, that was an amendment to the tennis and basketball court rehabilitation project, is that just here for introduction?
No, it actually goes with a line item.
Oh, this is just for, just, we're just, okay, just approval. I do remember reading that one.
That's the one that's sitting under the old one in new business?
Yeah.
Do you want to handle those together?
We probably should.
When did we get, when did we get this?
It may not be in my patent.
It's right here.
Yeah, no, I got this, okay, thanks, Scott.
It's fourteen? April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth, fourteen.
Two of fourteen dash twelve.
Okay. I don't even think I have it.
Do you need one here, Chris?
Yeah, I've got it, I don't, I don't have a copy.
This was a late edition.
I thought we were.
It was a late edition to the budget and to the, and to the packaging.
Right, I thought we were stopping late editions like this.
Often we do.
Barney, I thought we were stopping late editions like this.
Drive-bys.
Yeah, drive, drive-by budget amendments.
All right. Let me ask, I would ask you this, I mean, this is something that we need to pass this month?
In order to get those courts done, I think.
Within this budget year?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was, as I recall, that was the reason I was told.
Four options.
Well, I will move that we accept two thousand fourteen twelve, do we have a second, then we can discuss?
I'll second.
Second from Bob, discussion?
Peter, I mean, I understand the, the need to do this quickly, but this is, was just dropped on us without sufficient time to look at, sufficient time to read, sufficient time to go back and ask questions. You know, we had a policy before where we weren't gonna allow the drive-bys like this, I guess. So, I haven't had time to study this in detail. And where's the money coming from, what's the rationale behind that?
I have a, I have a suggestion, if you guys want to go along with it, we have a meeting next week? A quick meeting, but I can't imagine this taking more than a few minutes on the meeting calendar. Is that gonna cause any real problem for you guys?
I think that would work out.
If you want to table until then, I would be, I would table myself.
Till next, next meeting, next week? Okay, this, this will be tabled till next week, because I do agree with Chris, this, I mean, all week, when I, I would come into Debbie's office every morning, and she'd say, I'm still waiting for this stuff from Barney.
The, the only thing that I would suggest is that.
So, so Bob?
The, the only thing I would suggest is that whoever the elected council members are tonight, that they get this in advance.
Take a copy of it, yeah.
Because, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna need to review this going forward.
I want to make one point about that, they're not, whoever gets elected tonight is not a councilman till two weeks after tonight.
I think you're.
When are they getting sworn in?
They will get sworn in that night, but they will not take effect for, for a week.
It'd be you and me. Okay, so, oh, so I'll still.
You're still, you're still on the home.
Okay. Okay, cool.
You're right, thank, and for, just for our, for technical sake, I will introduce, and I'm assuming Bob's gonna second the introduction, just for, for the technical sake of having the process.
Correct.
Correct. Well, if introduction to be next meeting, it'll come up next week.
That's right.
Okay, now back on to Chris's strategic plan update.
Okay. All right, so a couple of months ago, I think this is the third time we're trying to do update number one, but we've lost two different attempts due to weather circumstances. Sort of the background, a few months ago, especially when we started up the community center task force, and we started talking about the community center. Lots of momentum in the community about, you know, we'd like to build a community center, like the art space, rec space. One of the challenges I found at the time was, okay, what's it gonna cost us, and can we afford it? And then I, we started talking to staff and came to realize, well, there, there's no one place where we as a community, we as a town, can look at a document and say, okay, for the next ten years, hey, here are the things that are coming. All right, so the idea of this strategic plan is to produce a document that will tell us for the next ten years, you know, what sort of expenses we're looking at, all right, we'll go into a little bit of detail, so what I'm gonna give you tonight is a quick snapshot. Again, before I start, Monica and Charlene and Barney have been crucial to putting the information together. One of the things I've come to realize is, and you know, we say this here, but one of the things I've come to realize is, the staff here's really, really good. And most of the information, almost all the information is put together with the staff, their suggestions, so something to note for me. Next slide. It's a little bit off, but this is my opinion only, that's just all it says. Next slide. Okay, so, I mean, update number one, the.
Barney, can you kill that light? Please, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so, you know, compiling the plan, we're well underway, the mayor's provided the resources. The budget planning, you know, has helped with all the data, data calls, and most of the raw data is in right now, next slide. Okay, so, I mean, the reason why we're doing this, the idea of this financial strategic plan is to implement the goals of the master plan. So the planning commission has just completed the master plan, I believe. That master plan will come to the town council, and that is our vision of how the town grows over the next five to ten years. So, the strategic plan, you might think of as the financial arm to how to make these sorts of things happen. All right, the main goal, to map out the total list of projects engaged, the financial impact of the town. All right, we're starting with two broad categories, so really, right now, you've kind of broken this plan down to two broad categories, I'll go through those in just a moment, next slide. Category number one, annual expenses. So, we're mapping out over the next ten years, what our annual expenses look like and how they're gonna grow. For example, the post-deployment benefits, you'll see our post-deployment benefits, they'll start to decline over the next ten years. Public safety is gonna grow, so I'll give you a snapshot shortly, that'll show you that our state troopers, each year, we're getting about a five percent increase in what it costs to provide police protection from the state troopers. Our Mount Airy volunteer fire company, right, as they move from an era of all volunteer force to one where they may need additional paid responders, additional funding is gonna be required for that. Vehicle and equipment, that may require averaging, some years, we need to replace a couple of large pieces of equipment. In other years, we don't have to replace large pieces of equipment, so we may have to average that out. The existing, and this is the key, right, the existing water sewer debt over the long term is gonna decline, but of course, we'll likely need new capital improvement projects. That'll change our picture, next slide. If you have any questions, just, you know, shout them out. Category number two, capital projects, so if you look at the major categories we have for capital projects, we kind of love streets and roads, sidewalks, storm drains, downtown zone, maybe a parking garage. That shows a long-term significant growth, capital projects, if we do everything in that category. Parks and Recs shows also a significant long-term growth, and may require averaging. If we do everything that the Parks and Recs department would like to do to improve the quality of life in town, that's, could, you know, require a very large amount of capital projects, capital infrastructure. Water and sewers showing significant long-term growth, that may require, you know, averaging, and, you know, the two large unknowns really right now, the rain packs, and if we gotta handle the rain packs, at least in Carroll County, Frederick remains unknown. And the community center. We really don't have any cost or idea where we're going with that just yet, next slide. All right, you'll see in this plan, we're gonna kind of lay it out with three categories. Critical, that addresses things we just simply have to do, police protection, fire protection, that's critical, things like that have to be addressed no matter what. Important, that's required to maintain basic infrastructure, I mean, if we gotta repay a road, we have to repay the road. And then finally, desirable, that's a wish list of things we would really like to have, next slide. All right, so eventually, the end goal is. All right, so, eventually, the end goal of the plan is, we'll take a seriously look at, you know, the funding side of things, to see what we can afford, what we can afford to do, how we can do it. We, we're going to try to recommend priorities. So the idea so far is, the plan will come to the council. Yep?
It seems he's basically saying, stand by the mic, they can't hear you.
Stand by the mic, they can't hear you. Oh, I can't read it. Oh, sorry. I can't read my, so.
Oh, it's just, okay, of course you can get to the mic, they said, please.
Maybe I use Bob's mic.
You could do it from your, you could do it from your seat.
Yeah, but I always get up and dance, I'm, well, I'll try.
Just stay close to the mic so they can hear you.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, so, um, what, the, the long-term goal is, when the plan is complete, is we'll work internally with the staff first and try to prioritize the list of things. So the, the intent is to give the council a list of projects prioritized, and then have the council with the rest of the community go through the projects and say, hey, this is something we'd really like to have, we can fund it. Maybe down at the bottom of things, well, we'd really like to have, but we don't want to raise taxes, we probably can't afford to do that. That, that's kind of sort of the end goal of what we're trying to go for. Um, and, and of course, we'll, we'll explore alternatives on how to fund things without raising taxes, of course. Next slide. All right, so here's an example category, all right? Um, annual expenses for public safety. Over the next ten years, we're talking eleven million bucks. And, you know, the plan will outline the costs and how they grow over time, because we're going to have to address those, and we don't want to wait, you know, we don't want to wait and find out all of a sudden we have a huge budget shortfall, so. Next slide. All right, so for police protection, all right? Again, I've already mentioned this, you know, it's approximately nine million bucks over the next ten years. We're seeing an increasing trend every year where, you know, it's costing us five percent more. So, the mayor's been very, very good about working with the state police to try to level off those costs, to try to contain those costs, but we're still seeing a trend that says, over the next ten years, we can expect a five percent increase every single year. That money's going to have to come from someplace. Well, one of the things we can start doing is talking to Frederick and Carroll County to help us out. As we know, Carroll recently cut the funding this year, right, for half a trooper. So traditionally, Carroll County always funded the town half a state trooper. This year, Carroll County decided not to fund this. We got no support from our county commissioners to help fund half a trooper here. So that cost has to be covered by the town, folks living in town. And, and as you note from the report from, um, Trooper Pike, you know, there are calls outside of town that we're responsible for. Also, if you look south of I-70, right, even though it's Carroll County, our guys are likely going to be the first responders to go to south I-70, because they're, can reach it much quicker than the Carroll County sheriff. So the town is varying costs for police protection into Carroll County, yet all of a sudden Carroll County's decided not to fund us. So, those are important considerations. The other thing we should probably start doing, the mayor put together a, a police task force to look at recommendations. So I, I'm not recommending we do anything at the moment, the point of the financial plan is, this is a challenge that's coming to us in the near future. Next slide. Another perhaps more critical challenge that's coming to us in the future, the mountain area volunteer fire department. As their ranks of volunteers continues to diminish, they have to move to more and more paid responders. Now, by tradition, ten percent of our property taxes goes to the fire department. And, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll look to the council and, and the mayor, that's always been historical, correct? There's not necessarily, um, wasn't a financial analysis done, it's just how the town grew up, is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay.
In addition to that, they also implemented back in two thousand six, a, uh, impact fee on new homes. And I think Charlene, approximately thirty to fifty thousand per year goes to the fire department from that fee as well.
Depends on how many permits.
Depends how many permits, so.
Right.
Two, two large funding sources.
Right, now, in, it'd be great if the fire department here, but most of our members were busy this evening, but my understanding is the fire department now has paid medical staff, so when you dial nine-one-one in town, there is definitely somebody there who's going to be able to respond to your medical needs. But in the near future, if you dial nine-one-one and there's a fire, maybe a large fire, there may not be enough volunteers to respond. If there's not, we're going to, you know, some funding mechanism's going to have to be established in order to staff those trucks. With the mayor, my, and Councilman King and I, we've had some discussions with the fire department, we've had some discussions with Frederick and Carroll County, nobody seems to want to help us at this point in time. So, again, that's an issue that's going to occur in the next five years or so, that we're going to have to look at and figure out how to solve. Next slide, please. Yep?
And so.
If you can identify yourself too.
I'm sorry, Howard Wagner.
Yes, Howard.
Back to the police and to the fire, both, it's nice to project the five percent, such, it's obviously something we have to take into consideration. But what are we doing with regard to facing the funding issues we're going to require, being underserved as we are now by both the state police and by the fire department, based on our. We want to sit down and practice, you know, we have x number, we have x number of people in the city, we should have more troopers, uh, but, you know, we haven't, so, does the strategic plan to be addressing also not just the, you know, the, the curve upwards towards percentage, you need, but the actual problem of how do we find more troopers?
Right.
How do we find more fire?
So let me try to answer the question this way, if you, and I'm going off the top of my head, if you actually look at the way our adequate facilities protection ordinance is written, which specifies certain levels of service, we exist in the deficit today. I'm currently not recommending how to close that gap, but your point is relevant and well-taken. We should look at how to close the gap. Right now, I'm trying to just get to a baseline to understand, given our current trends, our income and our burn rates, where are we headed? But, um, one of the things I'll ask staff to do is please take a note of your comment, because it is, it's extremely relevant, i- if there are identified gaps in police protection, how do we close that, so?
Yeah, we need more money, we need more revenue stream for, for.
Correct, but, right, but the, the concept of generating additional revenue streams via taxes is, is not one that I would recommend, nor, you know, is not a popular idea. But, but we'll make note of your comment, because it's very relevant that we have to look at that.
We've been talking about this for years, we only have, like, five troopers, right, covering us.
It's correct, we have five point five, yeah. Well, five point five.
Many times, you have only one trooper.
Correct.
You know, covering the entire, you know, the entire city.
Right.
And of course, my, my big fear is not so much his inability to respond, but conversely, his inability to get any backup if he has a domestic violence, if he has anything of a serious nature.
Right, one of the, one of the, one of the many shocking things I've discovered, as I've done some ride-alongs with our state troopers, is, right, what I understand, and I'm not a police professional, that one of the most dangerous encounters is a domestic dispute. Most of the time, our troopers respond to domestic disputes by themselves, because backup's simply not available. But, um, but, but it's a very good point, and something we'll look at, we'll make sure.
Councilman, if, if I may, because a couple of comments were made, I do have to clarify, uh, we actually do have backups, there are other troopers in the area, they are roving, so when they, when they, when they do get responses, they do have backups, and I can't speak to every situation. We also have coverage from Frederick and Carroll County Sheriff's Department, they have provided backups, I don't want to send the wrong message to the community. Okay, but, I mean, your point is well-taken as far as the deficit, and I think the council's acknowledged that, but please rest assured that we do have backup.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you. Um, another category, and this is an awful busy slide, especially when the projector's a little bit offside, but if you look at streets and roads, and this is capital projects, over the next ten years, we're talking about thirteen million bucks. So, significant amount of money. Now, one of the things we'll do is we'll start to break down that thirteen million bucks into different needs and categories, so, next slide. So here's a, a snapshot of a possible paving schedule. So, you know, over the next five to ten years, here are the streets we'd like to pave, and here are the approximate costs. So all of these costs need to be built into, planned, so we can look at them in a single document over the next ten years, and then understand, hey, you know, we have enough money to pave these roads, or hey, we don't. One of the, the variables we get, again, is the highway user, highway user revenue stream. From the state, um, we get a certain percentage of your gas taxes that comes back to the town. Now, this, a couple of things are happening. Number one, as we know, people are driving more fuel-efficient cars, the gas taxes haven't gone up. So that revenue stream, it continues to decline, that's a nationwide infrastructure problem. But then the other problem we have is, on occasion, the state takes that money and keeps it to balance the budget or spends it somewhere else. So we've had years where our highway, the, the amount of money due to the town from the state for highway revenue has gone to zero, because the state took all the money and used it for other stuff. So, you know, when the state spends too much money, they push the problem down to us at the local level. So, next slide. By the same token, here's some possible sidewalk, um, pavings that needed to be done. So, one of the things our, one of the things our town engineer's done is has started to go through and identify every single capital improvement project, how much it costs, so we can put this all together to determine where we're going. Next slide. Um, employee retirement, man, this is unreadable at this pace. Um, Charlene, if you want to comment on the slide on where we're going with employee retirement benefits. And the reason why we bring this up, if you look nationally, for example, let's take the city of Detroit, pretty bad example, it's not going to happen here, but the city of Detroit is essentially bankrupt. One of the things that helped bankrupt them is they can't afford to pay their employees' pensions and retirement benefits.
Well, this refers to post-employment benefits and what the town puts out for employees that are already retired. And we expect this to actually decrease over the next ten years, um, due to the fact that we currently just have three retirees, two of which are getting a pretty good benefit, but no one after them will get this benefit. So as, you know, they get older and eventually drop off our roles, um, the new employees that retire will get a significantly less benefit, and then after, I think it was January first, two thousand twelve, anyone that started after that will receive absolutely no benefit. So within the next fifty years, this benefit will cease to exist.
Right, so, again, that's a, a budget trend line that perhaps loosens money up for other capital projects. Next slide. Category, flat iron building, so here's capital improvements, we know the flat iron building is an issue, we haven't quite yet, the, the council hasn't quite yet decided on what to do with the flat iron building. But, again, one of the points of the, doing a plan like this is, looking at all the capital projects, and then trying to itemize which capital projects are the most important, that will tell us what we can do, and again, what we can't do, what drops off the list. Next slide. Community center, a lot, again, a lot of talk about a community center right now, but, you know, at this point in time, there's insufficient data, I believe, to tell, to determine whether or not we can afford to do a community center, how might we pay for it? So, we're certainly looking for alternatives, but, again, this would be something else that would go in this plan to say, here's what we can afford for a community center, here's how we'd run it, here's how we'd operate it. Next slide. So, reserves, we get a lot of questions about reserves, so, I mean, I thought I'd put the actual number from two thousand thirteen, but in fiscal year two thousand thirteen, we had unrestricted fund balances of almost five, five point nine million, in general, in the general fund, and five point five million in water and sewer. So, nominally, we have about eleven and a half million dollars in reserves right now. So, but we have no clear policy on how those reserves are to be spent. We've had a lot of discussion here at the council, previous councils have had a lot of discussion, the reserves have built up, eleven and a half million dollars is a lot of money to have in reserve, I don't think we want to spend it all in one gigantic, you know, cat, one gigantic party, we want to figure out how to allocate those reserve in a sound fashion. Next slide. Again, hard to read, but, uh, a group called Government Finance Officers Association, what they're saying is, you know, generally for a town of our size, you, in your general fund, you should have no less than two months of regular operating revenues as reserves. The money works out roughly to six hundred thousand dollars, if you follow this guidance. I know we have a tendency to be a little bit more conservative, which is fine, but if we have eleven and a half million bucks in reserves, and these folks say, you really should only need to carry six hundred, let's say we carry a million, well then, there's ten million dollars here that we could invest into the community somehow. Next slide. Um, what about, you know, again, what guides us on the reserves, predictability of revenues, volatility of expenditures? So when you point out volatility, for example, highway revenue fees, that's a really good example of, we count on the state giving us x amount of money to help pave our roads, but when the state keeps that money and uses it for other purposes, well, that puts us in a quandary, so. So some of the factors that we'll consider when we look at reserves. Next slide. So, right now, our data calls for all the information, it's essentially finishing up now. So, give us a month or so, what we're going to do is try to categorize all of the information, so we know how to best understand it, and then we're going to try to, if the council's okay with it, we're going to try to prioritize. So I'll work with staff just to come up with some example prioritizations on how you might allocate the money, we'll bring it to the council and the commissions, and then, you know, we can have a dialogue and discussion on how we can go forward.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, any questions? Nope, great.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, Chris, you're also next, you've got, uh, commission quorum.
Right, um, the reason why this is on the agenda is, we've had one or two meetings of late where commissions were unable to reach quorum, they were unable to conduct business. Tom, Tom, the town attorney, now I've been looking at different options. And, what can we do, do we do anything, is this a solution looking for a problem? And, we sort of kind of arrived at perhaps a suggestion to the council if it wants to consider it. Ethics and planning are two of our commissions that have legislative authority. They must have a quorum to conduct business, I don't think there's much question about that. For those commissions that don't have legislative or budgetary authority, ones that are more advisory, uh, water and sewer comes to mind, Parks and Recs comes to mind. One of the suggestions is if, if they can't reach quorum at the discretion of the chair, they can go ahead and hold the meeting, conduct business as if they had quorum, and make their recommendations to the council. So, I mean, essentially, Tom?
Yeah, and probably the easiest way to put that into effect would be by ordinance. Right now, we kind of have a hodgepodge of, a couple of the, uh, commissions do have ordinances, um, that basically say they're to develop their own rules. And, in theory, uh, in those rules, you, you would define what you need to do what, you know, what, what quorum is, first of all, and, and that you need it, uh, in order to conduct business, or what the exceptions might be. So, it's kind of a hodgepodge, I think to, to put it into effect would be, uh, you know, you'd probably want to do it by ordinance, so it applies to these commissions, again, say for, for planning and, and ethics, uh, so that it is, it does become uniform in effect through each of the commissions, that would be effective.
Bob's got his pen later.
Peter, I'm, I'm almost positive during, during Frank Johnson administration, right, when Frank took over, he re, reworked a lot of, a lot of the commissions and the requirements and the, and quorum was one of them, and I'm, I don't remember exactly what it was, other than I was the chair, and I got, you know, Chair of Parks and Recs at that time. And I got something that, that labeled a quorum as a minimum of four. Um, four, four members. And there were some also, there were some also, um, guidelines for electing officers and all that kind of stuff, like I said, I don't remember exactly what it was.
I do have a vague recollection of that, I'm wondering, Debbie's saying you're correct, which means you must be.
Was it, was it a policy, was it a discussion?
I have upstairs, every time we have a new commission member, we send in information that Frank.
And what, was this just a policy, or did, or did this come to the council for a vote?
One thing was a vote, I believe, and the other thing's probably a policy, I can believe.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would say go and get it now, but let's get it for future, so we can.
I'll, I'll get it.
But Pat's got, Pat's got it.
Yeah, I, I don't remember anything specifically, other than he did add alternates, he added alternates.
Yeah, I had alternates as well.
But you had mentioned that the commissions have the right to set their own rules? I've never read that in charter, some of them specifically say what a quorum consists of.
Yeah, no, I, I just mean that, you know, if you go through the different chapters of the, of the code.
Right.
For each of the commissions, some say, um, you know, they're to adopt their own rules and procedure, I believe. Um, and others talk about.
Because the commission is pretty much laid, they.
That, that is, I, I think Tom's correct.
Well, I'm sure he is.
Each, each one was given.
But it's laid out what, what constitutes a quorum.
And, and it was.
In, in some cases.
Yeah.
Some not.
So I guess we ought to figure out exactly which, which commission should be affected, because I was here at two of those nights.
Well, the question is, the question is, have we already, has that already been, actually been voted on?
Lisa's going to get it.
Okay, Lisa's going to get it, okay.
Let me ask you a quick question, okay? I know that when we budget money here, okay, and we put it into the budget, we put it into the different buckets, um, a bucket. A bucket may have a very generic, like, for instance, talking about Parks and Rec, I'm, I'm talking about like a cultural line item. Um, and then from there, like, at the Parks and Rec level, we would have to do a, a vote to release money from a line item or a bucket. Would quorum need, need to be reached at that point in time to release funds? Or because the inherent part that the money's already budgeted by the town, you would not need quorum? So, I mean, I, I just think that's one of those sticky wickets that you've got out there, where you may need to have a quorum to release money that's not specific for this purpose.
Right, I, I agree with you, David, um, you can't have two people show up to a meeting and, and vote to spend.
And then say, I want to release money for this.
Vote to spend a hundred thousand dollars for something.
Yeah, actually, it's a fabulous point, it begs a different question, though. Let's take that, that scenario where, and I'm trying to think what's in the code. Parks, let's take a Parks and Rec scenario where, right, the two people show up to spend a hundred thousand dollars to buy, uh, whatever. Does the code, the council's budgeted the money, does the code specifically authorize the commission?
I, I don't think it should, it should still come to the mayor.
Well, we, we saw the vote on the contract.
Yeah, and we, I think we have.
If it falls within that thirty thousand.
Well, what I say is, okay, let's, let's say, for instance, okay.
Let me pull this back, here's, here's, here's the, for instance, so, right, there's, um, a thousand dollars in the beautification budget. Beautification votes to spend five hundred dollars on petunias, well.
That's for the threshold.
Do they have, does the charter, where in the charter does it say, say that body can execute?
I think by, by ordinance, we're, they're, they're allowed to purchase because it's below the threshold.
I think the mayor has to sign off.
There's a threshold.
I'd cut that off.
Yeah.
Yeah, mayor would, mayor would still have to sign off on it, but if it's below that, you know, a couple thousand bucks, they can go ahead and do it, provided that the mayor.
It's just the other check. Well, you gave it the authority by putting it in the budget.
By putting the budget, we, yeah.
By putting the budget, but they should not be able to disperse those funds without some kind of executive signature.
The mayor, under the threshold.
Yeah, it should be, but you gave the authority at this table when you put it in the budget.
Charlene's going to tell us how it's really done now.
They always work with staff, normally staff will purchase something.
Yeah.
So, it's, it all goes through the Parks Department, um, whether it's the commission or the, the workers.
And staff falls underneath the mayor's executive side, so.
Which is probably the reason why you have a liaison from, like, for instance, we have a Parks liaison that shows up to a Parks and Rec meeting or a beautification meeting, and then we work with them, because I believe they have authority from the mayor as the executive to purchase things. So, we'll, we'll vote to say.
I disagree.
We'll vote to say, okay, let, let's take your, your, for instance, we have a thousand dollars in a beautification budget. We, we vote five hundred dollars to, to buy flowers. At that point, it, it goes through the, the Parks person.
Yeah, that, under that scenario, you would have department heads again, and you could not have department heads. There's a clear division between executive and legislative, so.
I'm, I'm a tool for communication between this council and the sanitation and recycling, both ways.
That's exactly right. But you're not making the executive decision.
I, yeah, I'm not in charge of anything.
No, 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 I'm talking about, we have a, we actually have a member of the town, meaning a.
Town staff person.
Town staff person showing up.
Steve Mollick or something like that.
I'm not talking about a council person, I'm talking, you have a town staff person that is clearly under the executive branch.
That's fine, you're right, that would be right.
So, I, I didn't mean that.
That would be right.
Well, I mean, this is useful, though, but I, I had one idea here. Clearly, I, I think, for the example you pointed out, Dave, you need quorum. If, commissions need quorum, if you can't get quorum, don't do business. But, but some of the discussion has got, now got me thinking, do we have a policy? Does the town have a policy?
Here comes Lisa.
Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we.
Does she have the election results?
I'm pretty sure we do have a policy.
Bruce is sitting out there in the chair, see him? He's got the election results.
Does he have the fire report? He's exhausted, so, so let's finish this one up. So, do we need, so, clearly, we need a quorum. Do we need some sort of written policy that says how we expend, how can we expend funds?
That, that policy, if I remember correctly, there were, you know, you missed two meetings, and, and you could be removed, there, there were.
I remember that, you're right.
There were a lot of things on there that dealt with these issues of not being able to get a quorum.
But what about expenditure of funds?
He's talking about expenditure.
I, I don't know. Uh, you know, I, I remember parts of it as it was happening, it had to do with election of officers, alternates, quorum.
Resolution two thousand six dash nine, providing uniform guidelines for the conduct of commission meetings. So, it looks like, and my signature's on the back as Secretary of the Council.
Don't you remember?
No, I don't, um, but this was, you know, back in two thousand six, so I, but I do see.
Three years ago.
That's my scrawl, um, so we obviously set, you know, but, but then we were like remembering what it said, but, um.
So, can I say, can I say?
Commission officers, select officers in a majority vote, there should be no limitation of officers, chair preside a meeting. Serve one commission at a time. And then there's actually an ordinance that goes with it as well.
You have a six, do you have two thousand six eight, Peter?
I have two thousand six, no, yeah, two thousand six eight, I have it. But I'm looking to see if it actually sets a, a quorum.
And I'm, I'm suspecting that the, the council that was seated at that time was, was thinking the, the same issues that we were thinking, and, um, set up some rules and guidelines for the commissions, because I think up until that point, we really didn't have a whole lot of rules and guidelines, and, and some of the commissions were just, people weren't showing up, couldn't get anything done.
But there was an attendance update.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, my thought is, yeah, based on Dave's rationale with Bob saying, my, my intent here is to drop the issue of quorum, if you don't have a quorum, you can't do business, but I think I'm now more focused on.
Who's authorizing the funds?
Yeah, and I think it's, really should be a policy based off of executive.
It should be.
And I'm going to, I'll suggest to the council that, um, let's, we'll take this offline for advisement.
But they, the staff does, they do frequently throughout the day call me about this expense or that expense, so they, they definitely do. The impression is they don't, they do check in.
If, if we're comfortable it falls under executive purview, then we just leave it, I think.
And staff's aware of that, staff.
Ultimately, it does.
Well, in our, in our purchasing ordinance, it, I'm, I'm going to take some, because we were talking a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a threshold of three thousand, and, and that might have been updated. Just says, when the cost of a contract for supply services or capital improvements is three thousand or less, the purchasing agent may contract for the same without council approval. So, that's definitely pushing it, I think, into the executive realm, where the mayor, now, if the mayor wants to push that down to, say, the, I don't want to use department head, but if, if we, if whoever's the head of the Parks and Rec, or whoever's in charge of streets and roads, if, if the mayor wants.
Like a Brian Johnson.
Yeah, if he wants to push it down to that level, then that employee is showing up at a commission meeting. If the commission says, we want to spend this money, at that point in time, it empowers that executive employee to purchase the, the.
Yeah, it does.
And at that point, there's really no need to sit here and just create more government.
Sure, got it, okay, we're good.
All right, well, let's say, I think we're, I think we're good on this one.
Right.
A good clarification.
I think we, I think we ought to review what we have, and, and, you know, how it applies.
Yeah, Tom Scott went ahead and starts, so he can look at them and look them over, okay, up next.
That quorum thing should be.
Got a PWA for Pine Grove Manor, that's Heather and Tom, and now see Heather, okay. Um, oh, on the, yeah, okay.
Can't do it after the meeting.
Huh?
Yeah, the results are after the meeting, unless he's doing his fire report.
Yeah, that's going to wait till we're done.
Are you talking about fire report, yeah?
No, no, I was going to sneak the action results in during the fire.
No, 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 he's going to, he's going to, so, so let's hurry through this, so he can do it.
Got it, got it.
PWA, uh, it says Heather and Tom, and I don't see Heather, although she was here.
Is this just an introduction for us to read?
No, no, this is for approval, um.
It's a basically standard PWA.
PWA, there are only two changes that were requested and that are acceptable, um, to what we have in front of you.
This is actually across the street from Pine Grove Manor, correct?
Yeah, I, I gather, I'm not.
It's the other side of Main Street, going down, hanging down this, this slope behind that double house on the hill.
Yeah, they've got a sign leaning up about something, four lots for sale, four lots or something, yeah.
Yeah, four, four lots or something, yeah.
I think the two changes to this that I've been requested to make, and I did run these by Barney, and we, uh, we're okay with these two changes. One is to clarify on page two, second paragraph, that the as-built will be provided upon the construction of underground facilities, not with each underground facility. And then number two, I think.
Plural, third sentence, everybody, second paragraph.
Okay.
Take out the word each and change facility to facilities, okay?
And then, secondly, and, Ron, I, I can't, I couldn't locate where in here necessarily you had this specific request, but he wanted to add language that made sure that the standards that applied to the drawings when approved are the standards by which the project will be constructed. And I think he wanted that clarification.
What page are you on?
It's very, very next paragraph, same page.
Peter, if I suggest we do the same with this, is next week, we're, to me, we're modding a legal agreement on the fly.
No, these are, uh, these are fairly minor, I, I think these are just clarifying, uh, to, to simply clarify.
I mean, it, it looks to me like these are just two minor changes.
Very minor changes.
Something that we, we have had.
To me, if Tom's looking back to Barney about where that change goes, I'm worried.
No, no, I, it's just that I tried to pull up his red lines on my iPad, and they didn't, the red lines did not appear. And that's why I'm having a hard time looking.
Yeah.
But it'd be the very next paragraph underneath of that, uh, where we was.
On page two, third paragraph.
Yeah, in, in the event of any conflict or inconsistency.
Bless you.
Between one part of the development plan or any other part of the development plan, let me find it.
Development guidelines of the town of Mount Airy.
Yeah, there it is.
Yep.
Uh, I think he wants to, they want to add where it says, in the third line, development guidelines of the town of Mount Airy, the following, that apply to the drawings when approved.
Okay, he just wants to make sure, let's make sure he's got a level playing field, it's not changing on him as he's going through.
The standards aren't changing, right.
Right.
Yeah.
That apply to the drawings.
Yeah.
When, when approved.
Yeah, so when we approve his drawings, he wants to make sure we're not going to change our standards.
Yeah, yeah.
And when he's already got approved drawings going through.
When they're approved, oh, that's it.
Right, gotcha.
All right, I will, I'm, I will move, we approve this with Tom's changes, got a second to get any discussion. Hearing no discussion, uh, take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous, okay. A word of contract, uh, I guess we're actually, we'll put this off till next week, because it goes to the other one. And we've got a reduction bonding for St. Andrews.
So, I've got a conflict interest on St. Andrews, it's all kids.
All right, reduction in bonding, I will move that we release as recommended.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Chris, you can come back. All right, moving on to our reports. Mayor's report.
I'm going to yield my council report for this evening, I'll publish it later and distribute it to council. Uh, my appointments for tonight are Kevin Jackson for Board of Appeals, actually, that's a reappointment. And new appointments are Beverly Blatchford for beautification, and David Rebeu.
Pride Bueller.
Pride Bueller.
David Pride Bueller.
For Streets and.
David, David would be a good addition to Streets and Roads.
I'm, I'm going to accept the mayor's.
I will second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay. Sanitation and recycling and arts council.
Um, I'm going to jump in real quick with the, the MML meeting that we had down here at Lorianza's, and it was announced at the MML meeting that we are going to get, a, a certain amount of money has been given by the state to the county, um, to Frederick County specifically, um, and they, we're going to get the same, we're going to get the same amount in high, in pothole repair money as we get the same percentage of, of the, of the block. So, we are going to be getting some pothole repair money, they just, they don't know how much it is right now. Um, but we can, we'll be looking for some, some money.
That was on the Frederick County side, is our proposal.
That's, that's on the Frederick County side.
Correct, right. Basically, get our per capita percentage of roads.
I thought we had the amount, but.
Do we, no, we got a highway user fees, do we have enough for the pothole repair?
Did you get a number for the pothole repair?
You know, they're giving us money for pothole repair, Frederick County, did we get a final number on that?
We don't have a final number.
No, have a final, okay.
Maybe five thousand, six thousand, something like that.
It's better, it's better than nothing.
Better than nothing.
Okay, we'll take it.
Okay, sanitation and recycling, the commission is working on an emergency contingency plan to deal with trash collection in the event of an emergency or natural disaster. That, that speaks for itself. We are working out the details of camera installation on the downtown trash and recycling center. Saturday, May the tenth, that's this coming Saturday, ten AM to one PM at Watkins Park, there's a free shredding event for town of Mount Airy citizens sponsored by Secure Shred of Westminster.
Okay.
So.
Are they going to be checking IDs and stuff when you go there to make sure you're, or is it?
Yeah, we're.
I mean, I, I am, but I just want to let the public know.
They may shred them.
Well, I know when we used to do the, you know, the big, the big pickup thing, and you drop your junk off, you would have to prove that you lived in town.
Uh, I would have, I would have something with you, uh, you know, water bill or something to that effect that shows that you do live in town.
And it's free.
But it's free, it is free for all citizens of Mount Airy. Saturday, May the tenth is also our next yard waste pickup date. That's this coming Saturday, so all those bags out at the curb will be gone. Um, the Mount Airy Arts Alliance report, on Saturday, May the thirty first, the art exhibit titled Sweet, Sweet Summertime will open in Town Hall. This show runs through July the fifth. Um, later that same evening, the summer concert series will begin. Every Saturday night, either in Town Hall or in the courtyard adjacent to Town Hall, there will be a free concert, um, local talent, and these guys are good. The genres run from classical to bluegrass. If you need to check on who's playing, you can check the schedule out on the mountairyartsalliance.org. And that's my report.
Thanks, Bob. Parks and Rec beautification.
I don't have anything to report.
All right, planning EDC.
Thank you very much, so, planning EDC, for planning, we ended up having our meeting on April twenty seventh. We ended up approving the permit for Davie's Tree Service. We also ended up approving a site plan for Ultimate Electric, uh, both local businesses, so we welcome both. We ended up having Carroll County Planner come, discuss that Frederick County was unable to attend. Uh, and then we started talking about the work session dates, as well as some of the homework that, uh, the commission members were going to do with regards to OPE and MDX zoning, uh, moving forward now that the master plan is getting ready to, uh, come to the council for review and approval. The next planning commission meeting will be May nineteenth, and it will be here at Town Hall. As far as EDC goes, um, they welcomed the Big Show in for a new business. Big Show came and gave a presentation on what their business was, they're on Back to Circle, uh, they do sporting stuff. So, it's nice for the kids to be able to go there and do indoor batting cage, et cetera. Also, uh, Bill Butts from Planning and Zoning had approached EDC about the Mount Airy Commission Exchange. That meeting is tentatively planned either for the sixteenth or seventeenth of June, seventeenth of June.
It has an actual date now.
So, it's not tentative, it's finalized.
But you're already too late to RSVP.
No.
Information, real time. And as far as.
I'm always saying that, because, because when he sent out his email, I think it's just the dates, and I, we, we've been emailing on that topic.
Okay. And as far as EDC's next, uh, meeting, that is going to be on the twenty eighth at seven thirty PM in Town Hall. And that concludes my report.
Sounds good, thanks. Streets and Roads, I was not at the Streets and Roads meeting, uh, because I was out of town, but just a couple highlights from the meeting minutes. One I would like to point out, which I'd like everybody to take, like, because, you know, we run into these road problems, and every now and then, you know, you're scratching your head, how do you fix it, how do you fix it? And I think our staff and our engineers and everybody here in town and, and our road guys came up with a really good way to solve the problem. And that is, if you go up Park Avenue here, to where Park goes around the curve and splits, and right at Wildwood Park and Ridge comes off, you always have the problem of people pulling up to the stop sign and not being able to see up and down the street. So, go there and look at how they've repainted it, they've moved the block out to let people know how far they can pull up before they're in the new road. And it really shows, and it, it, I think, I was real impressed when I saw how they came up with that, so that worked real well. We've had a question that came in from Nottingham, and I'll, I'll bring this up because it's to some extent a compliment for us, which is, um, our guys do such a good job. which is, our guys do such a good job of plowing Nottingham that they can't get out of their development, because the county's not plowing the streets to get into Nottingham. So they can drive around in there real good when it snows, but they can't go anywhere else. So the requests come in, like, can we plow Waterville Road so that they, so that they can get out of Nottingham? And so that, so Streets and Roads has kinda passed that on to the council. It's somewhat of a complimentary issue, but I, I think our plowing Nottingham is probably, I mean, plowing Waterville, which is a county road, is probably somewhat problematic. You know, I just, you know.
Well, if they, if our guys had to plow the roads that could get access to Nottingham.
This is, this is pretty, this is pretty wild, because I've experienced the same thing, I have four-wheel drive, I'd go to work if it snows.
And we can't get out of town.
I, yeah, I, I get downtown and I drive and I get to the Exxon station up there and then it's a wall of snow. I'm done, I'm turning around and coming back, 'cause it's just not plowed.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few times when I can drive around town and I get to the edges of town and then I'm stuck.
Yeah.
That just tells you, don't leave Mount Airy.
It's, it's a nice idea, but at least at this point, I don't know that we wanna look into taking control of plowing it.
I don't think, I don't think you can officially do it, as a council body, officially take over something, you, you would have to.
Yeah, we actually can't do it, we have to work with the county on it.
You'd have to legislate that, you can't do it, executive wise, I could probably say run the plow down there if need be, but I wouldn't legislate.
Well, I, I think you probably still have to talk to the county, it's their road.
Well, yeah, it's a county road, so it's still getting a little dicey.
We're gonna, and we, they request.
What happens if somebody gets hurt plowing a county road?
What happens if someone turns down?
Um, John Stumey, who I think's out there, he's working on the traffic control for, improving our traffic control on the fireworks event on July 3rd, hopefully we'll have the same problem we had last year, which is it'll be so crowded that we have to deal with that.
Peter, if we could go back real quick, if we ever find out that they're really locked in Nottingham, we may step in and do something to help on just a temporary, part-time basis, just, our friends in Nottingham know, we won't.
Well, all we can do is really connect him to the rest of town, we still can't get it anywhere else.
We, we may do something on a part-time basis.
Make gun safe way. Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I?
No, that's fine, that's fine. And another issue which always comes up is, and I think they'd like to hear maybe the, where the council sits on this, is we always get the idea of speed cameras thrown out at us. Speed cameras have become more and more usable as the state has changed the regs. We've discussed them a few times on Streets and Roads over the years, and, you know, like, obviously, this is a, would be a council thing, not a Streets and Roads thing, you know, how's the council feeling on speed cameras?
Peter, I was thinking about speed cameras Saturday, as I was driving through Damascus.
Montgomery County?
Yeah, Damascus. Where they keep moving them. Right, where they keep moving them, and the minute everybody hits Damascus, everybody's doing thirty, thirty miles an hour. I mean, as long as you're not doing like DC does, puts them on two ninety-five to generate money.
They're crazy, a hundred and fifty dollar tickets on two ninety-five.
Right, DC does it to generate money.
Yep.
To trap people and generate money, as long as it's used to control traffic on residential streets. I'm for it, don't speed down residential streets and schools, that's my opinion.
But the interesting thing, it's one thing to publicize that there's a speed camera, and when you know, everybody, I guarantee you, slows down where that speed camera is. By driving through Damascus, I don't know if anybody realized, they move them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have those white boxes that you see move around.
From where seventy-five all the way up to one oh eight, you're.
They have one that is mobile.
No, they actually move the one that's right across from high school.
I haven't seen them moved.
It's gone.
I've never seen them moved.
There, there, there's one that's static right across from the church, and then there's one before that that's mobile.
Right, no, that one, I agree, but there's another one that was in front of the school.
They stop one.
There was a white one, a white box in front of the school for a long time, they moved that one.
So the school one's gone now.
Here's the thing, no one speeds through Damascus.
I understand.
I think, no one speeds through Damascus.
I think it's a great deterrent.
Every, every Monday morning, I pass, if you go up to one oh eight and turn left, there's immediately a speed camera on your left-hand side. And about a half mile around the turn, there's another speed camera on the right-hand side, and I've told Karen, I've been laughing about this. Every Monday morning I go by there, the thing is knocked down and dented. Every Monday morning. When I come back through Monday afternoon, it's up again.
And why is it you carry a baseball bat in there?
Any comments, guys? All right, well, you know, I guess I'll, I will throw it back to, you know, Streets and Roads, that the council was not, you know, you know, was willing to talk about it, I think, is probably the same.
I only heard one council member speak.
If we're, if we're doing it as a, as a, a speed control device, I'm for it.
I didn't hear anybody saying they were against it, so.
But if this, if we're doing it as a revenue enhancing device, I am not for that.
As long as it's mobile, I'm, I'm all for it, because at that point.
You can use it everywhere town.
Right, well, that, but my, my big thing is if you put something static, people are going to get used to it being there and they'll slow down for that particular spot. But if you have it mobile and you have it, you know, able to move and able to put in different places, people won't understand or won't realize where it's at. And then at that point, it becomes a.
A deterrent.
A behavior change at that point.
Yeah, I agree, okay, good, well, we'll, we'll obviously look at that, and that'll be Streets and Roads for tonight. And we're up with Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, we've got another request for a waiver from the Fog Ordinance. Briefly, the Fog Ordinance's fats, oils and grease was passed to, to, to try to prevent a lot of the problems we started having with businesses dumping grease into our water and sewer system, clogging it up. The intent of the legislation was not to catch nonprofits, churches and things like that. One or two of them have gotten caught up in the bureaucratic mess, but Water and Sewer is working on, through a process to make sure that.
Schools too, right.
Schools as well, that they get waived. Also, there was a big spike, and so everybody knows, there was a pretty substantial spike on the, in the amount of wastewater going into the plant. It was like a million gallons this month, so.
Probably all that rain.
All the rain, and we may have still, Barney, I mean, you know, Barney, correct me if I'm wrong, we may still have an I and I infiltration and a problem that we'll look at, but it was a pretty decent spike, so, million. So that's something I'll bring up next commission meeting. Moving on, Community Center Task Force, the Community Center Task Force was given a very, very difficult job. We want a community center, what is it? The last meeting we had was a really, really good meeting, the mayor's intern, Tyler Graham, brought in some, some, some of the youth from around the community who interacted with the board, brought a lot of information to us. And the Community Center Task Force really has almost completed their needs assessment, and they're really starting to move together towards what I think is a plan to recommend to the council. We're a little bit ways away, but the task force itself, it's blessed by a lot of very, very involved people, really sharp people. And they're really starting to move and to coalesce into a direction where they can make a recommendation. So, I mean, give us a few more months, but it's progressing very, very well with a lot of dedicated folks, a lot of help from the arts folks, and, and, and we're doing good things, so, that's my report there.
All right. Community Center Task Force is next, is there?
That was it.
That was it.
I was thinking that was rolling into your Street, into your Water and Sewer, Monica.
The only thing I have to say is that we have started a dialogue with Frederick County on the rain tax, on the Frederick County side, and we are gonna meet with the staff. And I would like to input Mr. Swanson on that meeting too, Barney.
Sure.
We're gonna meet with their staff, and also Tom Deville is gonna assist us too, so, we're gonna do that around later in May.
Okay, Tom, town attorney report.
Other than, we'll discuss in the closed, I didn't know I had to handle it.
All right, I'm gonna go over through the code enforcer report and let's bring in the election results. Bruce, you're up.
Can we get Drummond?
Does he wanna do fire department?
Do you wanna do your fire report first, or do you want?
While you're walking up, can you make one up?
I did say to my box, but I was like, okay. And I do live in Nottingham, I have a four-wheel drive.
Do you wanna put a plow on it, so you can plow all the way to the rest of town?
Well, as you know, we had elections tonight. Like to thank everyone that assisted with that, the members of the election board and all the poll workers who went in a very long day, we started about 5:30 this morning. And closed the doors probably at eight, and we tally things, we have to tally fairly quickly, but we have to justify it across all the books and registrations and things. And we have all that checking out. So we had a total of four hundred and twenty-one votes cast for a six point five, seven percent voter turnout. We had twelve absentee ballots distributed and twelve absentee ballots returned, and we had four hundred and nine votes cast via the voting machines. Out of that, we had a hundred and three residents of Frederick County cast votes via the machines and three hundred and six residents of Carroll County cast votes via the machines. The results are as follows. For mayor, that Rockenberg. You laugh, he had somebody come in, in second. Had competition.
Donald Duck.
There were three hundred and fifty-one votes cast. We had six write-ins and Dick Swanson got two, so he came in second.
Now, how did you deal with that since, since, since Dick was the other election judge?
Well, we made sure one of the other election judges was on. The votes for town council, Phoebus, two hundred and seventy-two. Strong, two hundred and sixty-nine. Stumey, a hundred and ninety-six. And there were three write-ins. So that's two seventy-two, two sixty-nine, one ninety-six and three write-ins. And that concludes my report, and I will turn over to the town clerk, this information and the various ballots.
All right, Bruce, I think, do we actually accept those at next week's meeting, or is that done tonight? It's done tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, I will move we accept those election results, have a second from Bob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Very quickly, I would like to say, I, I've been around through this election this time. And what a nice group of guys, what, you know, you two guys were awesome, Scott, you were too. I walked out of voting today and all three of you were sitting around the table, having a discussion. And I just, years ago, that never would happen, thank you very much, gentlemen. And thank you.
Thank you, Bob, yeah, I, I agree.
The write-ins?
You got the two write-ins?
No, there was, there was three write-ins.
I think his name was Anybody Bob? Rocket, anybody.
Anybody Bob?
Anybody.
No, there was.
Related to bill buttons for.
All right, is it called for any other business? Is there any other business? All right, I'll call it the bills be paid. Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move that we go into a closed meeting to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Our topic will be, A, litigation and B, acquisition of real property or the possible acquisition of real property. Debbie, do I? I'll call out the names and we can check it off later.
Before we do this, can I ask for one piece of clarification?
Sure.
We have meetings that we're going to get sworn in and that kinda stuff, when are they?
Next Monday will be the swearing in.
Okay, next Monday is the, okay, the 12th is the swearing in, you listening, Ken? The 12th is the swearing in here at seven o'clock?
Right.
Seven o'clock? And we're, and we plan on having a short town council meeting afterwards.
Debbie, got a technical question for you, 'cause it came up at the table tonight. Typically, the purpose of that short town council meeting is for the election of officers and selecting chairs.
Right.
Ken will not take office for another week, so we can't have that meeting.
He doesn't take office till.
He doesn't take office for another week. Right.
Yeah, he's getting sworn in on the 12th.
Well, you didn't get to take office, but all you do is, you go ahead and you appoint those people, but they don't take those positions.
But, but he couldn't vote on.
I see what you're saying.
It's a week.
He can't vote on anything on the 12th. So we really probably, so this, we.
You know what, I know what, we have waited for that until the next council meeting.
Next meeting.
We have gone ahead and sworn him in, but we've waited.
We've waited till the next council meeting.
So what are we doing?
I just, it occurred at the table tonight, the issue, so I wasn't sure what the.
We can still have the swearing in.
Yeah.
You can still have a new agenda, I have one Barney's project.
Right.
But we won't be able to choose council, officers or commissions until the June meeting.
And I'll put that on the agenda for then.
June meeting, okay, just to be.
And at that meeting on the 12th, Ken will not be, not be allowed to vote and Councilman Blaze will still be here.
Correct, on those two items. Correct, I think that's probably the proper way to do it.
Just when I thought I was getting it. Bring me back in. We've got you trapped. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm thankful.
I think we're good, and I'm glad we clarified that, okay. So I've, I've moved that we go into the closed meeting and I've stated, Ford, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You got a second from David? I, I need to go through the roll call, Blaze.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Average.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
We were all, uh. We're, okay, we're gonna adjourn for five minutes, then we'll come back for that.